Is it feeding? Still no? Okay.
Want to take that, how many times I've tripled that?
What cord? Oh, is it your own cord? Is it working?
Not yet.
Does it slide? On my phone it says.
Okay.
Yeah, mine says live now. Yep. I can tell by the shape of the spot right there.
Ah.
It's live.
Okay, hey, and I got this. I don't think I signed it yet either. That's one I carried home. Are we ready? We get ready? Twelve seconds.
Yep.
Here we go. I rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as a group of citizens, as elected officials, and we ask that you be with us and guide us in all we do. Let us be diligent in our decision-making and let us be fair and to your word. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen. All right. Okay, so, real quick here. This is a work session, so it's informal. It does not, it is open to the public, but it does not necessarily allow for public comments. What is your, guys', thoughts on that for tonight?
I think we need to get all the information presented and then do some information gathering.
What are you asking?
Whether you want to hear from the public tonight.
Did you hear my suggestion? Did you hear my suggestion?
I heard it, but say it again.
That we need to present information and then do some information gathering.
So, okay, so what I'm hearing you tell me is we need to present the options. Can we hear back from that? Is that correct?
Yes, in an orderly manner, please.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to formulate in my head. I would like to hear from the constituents, because I've had phone calls about this.
Over.
Yeah, but I don't want, we only allotted an hour.
Okay.
Makes sense, so, is I, I want to get as much, I want to get as much input in as possible without going off on a dive.
Well, and the work session was divided up, I mean, or it's covering two topics. And it does run from five to six. And then we'll go into a special meeting. The special meeting was in case we come to some type of conclusion and need to vote. But I'm on.
Okay, I wasn't.
He did.
Yeah. The special meeting was designed in case we need to vote, and we also have another item on the agenda. So we, at six o'clock, we will go into the special meeting. But after the, after we're done with the special meeting, if we have not come to, you know, some type of, and we want to continue with the work session, we can add another, we can continue after six. After we adjourn the special meeting, we can continue with the work session if we still want to vote for that and do so. So, I'm just, I was just trying to get.
I'm sorry, I was trying to make sure my child was safe. What, I missed some of that.
What's that?
What was your plan?
I said my plan was in case we come to some kind of consensus that we need to vote on regarding the one item on the work session, not, not this one. This one, I didn't put on there, because, in the special meeting, but noise, noise resolution I did.
I, I was only aware that this was a work session for insurance.
You not see the?
Yeah, I seen that as a special meeting, but we're doing a work session on that as well?
There's a work session on the noise resolution.
Okay.
For when?
Yeah.
I took that as a meeting. Uh-huh. You're, the way you described it in your email was as a meeting, so that's why I said it as a special meeting.
Yeah, because it's on here as a meeting, as a special.
Okay, but I thought so I added it to the, I thought I had added it to the work session.
I didn't know about it, so I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, that don't matter, that don't matter. Let's, let's just roll on, because I, I am, I want to hear from, as many as I can hear from, regarding the benefits and especially what we're talking about on the insurance. So, let's start. Do you want to hear from them first? Or do you want to talk about the, the options that we got?
I can, I can talk about, I spoke a little bit. I can talk about what I spoke to employees about.
I don't think all the employees, I don't think all the, all the people understand what our options are. And I think we should lay that out to them, and then let's hear back.
Okay. Can we make a copy of these options?
Certainly, the clerk has them.
About as many as you can. I'll, I'll pay for the paper.
I'll plant another tree.
Paper on deposit of betrayal.
I'll bring up a, a brand-new stack of paper. It might be written on one side.
When this was presented on Monday evening, I had not had a chance to talk to Mr. Doherty about it, because he had literally just sent it to me right before the meeting started, and I didn't get to see it, read it, look at it, or speak to him about it. And so, I was seeing it for the first time, the same as everybody else. And he told me that there is absolutely zero changes in these plans as far as network and coverage. The only changes are the deductibles, and that's just to get the rates close to where they were before. He said that does not stop us from offering the previous plans with possibly, you could ask for a contribution towards those plans if somebody was really interested in them. He also said what is really popular is to offer, what the county has previously done is pay nine hun- the hundred percent of the $902 premium towards single, or employee-only. And what he said is, is really popular is to offer one of those HSA plans, and maybe the employer, Bourbon County, contribute the difference to that HSA. So, they found a couple of lower-cost HSA plans. There's one for 836, one for 844. And if you don't, if you don't think that you'll use a whole lot of your benefits, those would be possibly beneficial plans for employees, because if the other commissioners agreed and, and they said, "Let's do some employer contributions," we could do some employer contributions into those HSA accounts. And that's money that you, you would just keep, that would be yours to take with you, or to build up, or to use, or whatever. It would just be, it would be a huge benefit. Mr. Doherty recommended that whatever price, if we're staying at the 902 for employee-only or around there, that we do a fixed employer contribution rather than calling it a hundred percent. So even if it's even, the plan costs $905, if we contribute 900. That way, it's a fixed contribution, so we know how to figure and we know what we're looking at years to come. And then on the employee-plus plans, he said we would have to just decide if we're going to do that 900 plus an additional for any kind of employee-plus plan. Those are a lot easier to figure down the road. And that don't stop us from offering one of the very low deductible plans that we had previously. We could still offer that, but it would possibly come with an employee contribution, whereas it maybe didn't before. And that's what a few of you wanted to see. So that's definitely an option there. You guys have questions or thoughts? That's just from a brief conversation with Mr. Doherty this morning. But these are the same network and the same everything with different co-pays and deductibles. That's, that's the only difference. Do you have some questions?
Well, it's pretty much the same question I had on Monday night, and I had several calls regarding, and like on the employee-spouse, we'll just, we'll just look at that first column. The current is 1,938.45. So what do we pay and what does the employee pay in that current?
Okay.
Because, I mean, I had an employee tell me today that.
Susan, did you happen to print that off?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you. So currently, the employee-plus spouse, we pay on Plan A, 1,502 of the 1,938 total premium.
Okay.
And on Plan B, we pay, pay 1,530 of the total 1,761.
Who's this?
This is the same thing, but it shows you different percentages of what we pay.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Doherty did recommend that we go away from percentages. I don't think our percentages were really across the board, anyway. They were kind of all over the place, yep.
And that's.
They sure are.
Yeah.
And that's odd.
Yeah. And that was the concern that I got on several calls today regarding employee-spouse, that their, the concern is, is that their premium's going to go up if we, if we adjust it. So, and I said, "Well, that's why I invited them to show up tonight, because that's what we need to discuss." Because that's not, you know, here, we're, are we going to, like in that same column, where we're paying the full, the full amount on the single at 902 currently, are we going to pay, leave it at 902, or are we going to pay the 936.03?
That's all up to discussion, I would think.
Yeah, for certain.
Because the thing, the thing that's, the thing is, before you even have a discussion on any of this.
But I.
Before, so, please mute your phones. The chairman didn't tell you guys that before the meeting.
Sorry.
No, it's all right, it's all right, it's not a thing. This is, for me, this is uncharted territory, because I don't remember any of the previous commissioners really, really talking about this. This, let's be honest, this whole process is uncharted territory. The three of us has been doing deep dives on the budget, we're doing deep dives on this. This is not changing for the three of us. I can understand how you two operate, I'm operating pretty much the same way. I guess my first question before we go into this whole break, what's your goal? What would you like to see out of this?
I would definitely like to take Mr. Doherty's recommendation and do a fixed contribution. So even if the premium's 936, and even if we say we'll pay 930, I'd rather it be just, just fixed rather than, say, 100 percent.
Okay. You, sir?
I'm, right now, for me, it is, I'm pulling my way through this thing, so I don't have an opinion right now. I would hate to say that I want it to be fixed and then come back and have to say, "No, I don't, I don't want it to be that way." I'm wanting to look at the numbers, because I don't want, I don't want us to, you know, to throw a burden on our employees when we're already, you know, the, and I don't want to get caught up in the, in the debate over, over salary, you know, over wages and, and that, and the over, the total cost of it. But, I mean, my stance has always been the same, we're not paying them. And this was one of the little benefits that we, that we have, so that this, the better we can do for them, and that's the better, you know, and I understand, you know, that's why I brought the budget book, too, because we got to know where we, what we budgeted for, and we got to kind of, we got to stay within those realms. But I want to try to make it as painless as possible. If there's an increase, where that increase is going to come from. And then fix it. I mean, we, we, if, you know, like you said, this is uncharted territory. We shouldn't have to, I mean, this was the first year of it last year, coming off of a state program and going into this program. And, well, we went way over on our claims, so, but maybe next year we won't. So, you know, if, that's how insurance, you know, goes from year to year. One year you may have a bad year where everybody was sick, and next year, everybody's healthy. I'm just, I'm kind of leaving my, my whole options open.
Yeah, you want to be up. So.
What's your goal?
Ultimately, my goal is to take care of the county. That includes the employees of the county. Just because I'm taking care of the county doesn't mean you guys are not part of that group, you are. But I'm looking at everything, I've looked at everything from the very beginning in totality, not just one segment of the population, but in totality. I agree with Commissioner Milburn in to investigate that, that set rate. I also agree with what Commissioner Birbauer is saying, because we don't know what we don't know until we do a deep dive into it. So for me to latch on to one way to do it versus another, I think would be disingenuous to you guys. It would be a disservice to, to, to the employees and to the county. So I do want to take a look at everything before I make a final determination. Because right now, I did do some preliminary research, it is just not Bourbon County. Insurance rates are going to go up this year nationwide. Everything is going to go up. And insurance is getting hit. Homeowners' insurance is getting, is going nuts, health insurance is going nuts. I mean, that's, just by what's happening with the government shutdown, ACA not being, I mean, their, one side's fighting really hard for the ACA. You know, that's a trillion dollars over, I believe, what, in the next 10 years? You know, so that fight is out there in, in, in the public forums, so we're a microcosm of the society that we live in, so guess what's happening? We're going to slug through this, too. But I promise I will listen to each and every one of you respectfully. Okay? And in the end, I have to make a decision. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Well, let's get started. Who all wants to speak?
Do you want to come up to the podium?
Yeah. Okay, we'll start with Madam's clerk.
And Jennifer might have to tag team with me on this, because we kind of worked on this together. Being as myself and Jennifer are probably the only ones that have worked with this within the organization, I put together a side-by-side of what your current plans are today with what is being presented. You're welcome to pass those around.
Sure.
And I think the main thing that I want to point out is 74 percent of your employees are on Plan A. And this is going to be, in no better terms, as a deduction in their pay. Plan A has a deductible of $1,000 for individual and $2,000 for family, with a maximum out-of-pocket of $5,000 and $10,000 for family, with a 20 percent co-insurance. They also have a $20 copay for urgent care. And then they have $250 copay for emergency room and 20 percent co-insurance. Hospital services are covered from $0 to $300 per person, then a 20 percent co-insurance. And if you look at the best plan that's being offered for '26, your co-insurance is going from 20 percent up to 40 percent. Your office visits are going from a $20 copay for every visit to the first five visits having $35 copay. And then for specialists, from $50 to a $60 copay, then deductible plus 40 percent. So really, you're only getting five visits to, and for families, that, that may be very rough. There, again, the emergency room is quite a significant change. It goes from 250 copay, then deductible and 20 percent, to 250 copay, then deductible plus 40 percent. So the co-insurance is what is really going to be very devastating in addition to the deductible, because we're going from a $1,000 individual deductible to a $3,500, and that's the best that we're offering. And so, what's, what's even more concerning is Plan A, right now, is costing an employee $902. We're getting, in my opinion, a lot less benefit for $936 for our best plan that you would be offering. Significant increases, the way I would understand normally, if we had a 17 percent increase, you would put that 17 percent increase on the plans that we're providing today. That's not even being, being presented. So, I haven't been involved in those discussions, so I can't say what those premiums would be.
There are $150 difference per month on the, on the employee-only.
Okay. But that is what we, we planned for in our budget. We planned for a 17 percent increase. And so, when you look at this, you have 57 employees on that best plan. You have 11 employee spouses, yeah, go ahead.
Did we, I'm trying to remember, did we go back and add the 17 percent to insurance?
Yes, you did.
We shorted it by $100,000.
Yes, you did do that, too.
But did we add the 17 percent?
Yes.
Short of $100,000. So not.
So, percentage-wise, how short are we?
$100,000.
I think it depends on what employees, this is why you always keep a cash reserve in your employee benefits fund, is because it, your employees are going to move from year to year. Somebody may be on an individual plan one year, and they move to, may move to a family plan. I, that's okay. I'm not completely opposed to the defined benefit contribution, that's very popular. But you need to make it fair. So if you're going to give $900 to an employee, then you give $1,700 to a family. You know, that's, that's normal. You, you break up the two different types of programs. And that wouldn't be nearly as hard on, on these families that are going to have to shift. Now, there's been comments that have been made in the past that, well, we can move people to the employee-only, and they can go out to the marketplace and get different insurance. We are going to have, and I'm saying this because of experience, we are going to have a mass exodus of employees. We've already had numerous employees called very concerned and saying they're putting in applications other places, and we don't want to create that kind of a scare. And that's what's happened with just this individual stuff being presented. And so that's why I wanted to show you side-by-side, this is what we have today. And, and to not, not have that ability to understand all the conversations that are taking place, I've been doing this for a very long time. And there are things that you can do to, to reduce the cost, but you have to get into the plan details. And they've tried to do that here, but man, it is, it is completely hurting our employees. So, that is, that is my information that I have to provide to you, in understanding what the difference between fully insured and level-funded employee health plans are. And I have a handout on that as well. When you look at level-funded medical insurance versus fully insured medical insurance, the level-funded approach combines self-funding benefits with the predictability of fully insured plans, while fully insured plans provide fixed premiums and risk management by the insurer. So you're shifting the risk management from the insurer to us, is what you're doing. And so, probably the first conversation you need to have is, do you want to be a truly fully insured plan? Or do you want to be a level-funded plan? Because that's what's happening here. You're going to, you're going to take on a little bit more risk. And so this really kind of explains this. This all comes from the state, from SHRM, State, Kansas, it's the Society for Human Resources Management, is where I pulled all this information. So, I think that's important for the commission to understand. I did talk to Don Doherty, and he said that he would be available by phone call if you guys had questions. He'd be more than happy to answer them. But this isn't something that can be made like this, just quick decision. This, this is too much information to try and put in an hour-long meeting. In addition, we have, we are on a time crunch, because open enrollment is usually two to three weeks. So it allows employees to look at their stuff, get with their spouses, try to decide what they're going to do, and then they go on and they enroll. Generally, we are at the very last minute, and most employees are enrolling at the last minute. There was a statement made that we need to provide a platform for them to enroll online. We already have that, it's called Employee Navigator. That's what we use today. And that's what's going to integrate with all of our payroll information. But in order for people to be prepared, we should have had this done now. We are going to push this out and probably not get it to the employees by the middle of November, and we have to have it on the first payroll in December. So, there's not a lot of time for us to, to make adjustments. And this is something that is completely done by our office to push out for open enrollment. So, those are my comments, and I hope you'll take them under consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, Mike.
I think everybody can hear me.
Well, it's the public, sir. It's, it's the internet world.
I just wonder what's wrong with what we got. You know, when we went from state to what we have, it cost me money. Because the prescriptions and the stuff went up for me. I don't know whether anybody else saw it, but it did for me. I don't know why we got away from the state plan in the first place.
My understanding, we was talking to previous commissioners, they were promised something that didn't come to fruition. And to his credit, he admitted that it was a, it was a mistake to move us from state to, to this plan.
So it cost the employees, anyway?
It cost the employee, it cost the county, it cost everybody. And in the end, we are, and I'm not trying to dissmure to anybody, I'm just telling you the facts. You asked, so, the general was forthright with me, and I'm like, "Okay, well, what happens now is somebody's got to fix it."
And my understanding from the broker is that they thought they'd have more freedoms to change contributions, and that's why they did it. And none of, the fact is, none of us were here when that was done, so.
Right. I understand, you guys are flying blind, just like most of us are. But I, you know, we're arguing back and forth, or not arguing, but talking back and forth. Why can't we just stay with what we have?
We can offer one of those plans, but there may be an additional employee contribution to it.
Well, if it's not over, you know, a couple of hundred dollars or so, I'd be willing to do that.
We can definitely, we can put as many options for enrollment on there as, as we want, they said.
What is the increase to that current plan?
$150.
Per?
Per month.
Per month.
I'd be willing to pay that.
Per plan?
Per A or B?
No, 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 no.
One at a time, one at a time, please.
Do you have, do you have any of that?
No.
I don't either.
Call, can you call Mr. Doherty? I mean, I, I'm wondering the same thing Mike is, is that if they want to stay... Right now, we have two plans, A and B. Is that not correct? Is that, that not correct?
Plan A and B.
A and B. All right. So what, what is, I mean, because, you know, we want 117, so 117% in claims, so what changes? Does the premium change?
I wasn't provided any of that information. I'm sorry.
Huh?
I wasn't provided any of that information. I'm sorry.
Because it's 902 now for employee on A, 820 on B. You know, and then the total premium cost is how much? I mean, for the year.
Significantly higher.
Is it higher than what we budgeted for?
Yes.
I'm sorry, guys.
No, don't, don't be sorry.
I budgeted.
That's why we, we talked about it.
I'm not... Well, what's those figures? You said it's higher than the budget. What's those figures?
The, the budget?
Yeah, what's the total on this if we kept what we have now? What's the difference in what you budgeted for?
I, I crunched the numbers before you guys came in. Your total, and this is, I, I can break it down even further, but right now, your total numbers for everything we do for employees, 2.585 million dollars. Next year, it'll go 2.669 million dollars, okay? That's just off of our budget. So out of complete budget for the county, we're spending, and I want you to hear this, and this is not a ding, because, and many of you know me, you've talked to me, you understand how I am. This is 2 point something million dollars out of the whole complete budget for roughly 99 to 112 employees, okay? So there's others out there that look at things totally different, because you guys are here, and I appreciate you being here, but I promise you, I'm going to hear it from the other side, too, and I have a responsibility, but we all have, have a responsibility to it. So somewhere in the middle, I got to figure this out. But, your budget just for healthcare was 1.4 million dollars last year, and we went to 1.44 million dollars this year.
And in, none of the, none of the plans that was submitted by the insurance, except for the one with $6,000 deductible, even comes close to that, that amount of money, or the HSA. Because all the others are a little slightly higher than that 1.44. We got 1.475, but it's still $5,000 deductible. And then, the, the, the smallest one with the 3,500 deductible is, you know, that same, that same amount, or no, it's 1.53 million. So, I mean, we're, we're not, we're not there. But I want to see what our, what the total yearly cost would be if we stayed with A and B that you're currently on. And then we'll see where we can come, try to find that money.
And I guess from my...
Too bad we didn't go 60/40. Sorry.
Sorry, sir. And my question to you guys is, I mean, we, we represent you in one fashion or another, okay? So like, we cut the budget, we're below revenue neutral. And I heard that from a lot of the constituents out there, it's like, we want it at revenue neutral at the very least, and I heard like, you know, a lot of negative things about how much we're spending for employees. My thing is real simple. If I can cut that budget, if we can cut that budget down below revenue neutral, how much can we do with employee benefits, if at all? And I do mean if at all. I'm not saying we need to, I'm just saying, because here's, here's the thing. If we do the, this year, if we, if we come back and we say, okay, great, we go back to the old plan, what happens next year, the year after, the year after? Because you end up with, with budget creep. Makes sense? At some point, all of us has to make that hard decision, like, how do we do it? And I spoke to some people, they were like, well, because I did some of the math, because like, if, if we got two people that work for the county and they went for family plan, it actually costs 100 and some dollars more than if one person went for employee plan, which is paid for 100%, and the other person went with like, employee plus child. Makes sense? So there's ways of playing that, playing that game, or not game, but the, the plan. So I don't know. That's why I'm talking to you guys, to get a feel for it. Go ahead, sir, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, are you done?
Well, I just, you know, I don't understand, because you guys have got to, and I'm sure you have, but you guys have got to realize that you're talking about budget creep, which I understand that. I've done lots of budgets, been involved, and will, later, things work out. But, you've got to, most places give raises.
That's what it was.
To help that budget creep. We've not had a raise.
That is very much on my mind, sir.
You know, that's, yeah, you get a, let's say you get a dollar an hour raise, but the insurance creeps up, well, that's, you know, that's where that dollar an hour goes, but you're not cutting yourself, you know, cutting your throat. And that's what a lot of, you know, a lot of us has talked about, you know, if you increase this budget, or increase our insurance, or, you know, what we have to pay to astronomical amount, you know, there won't be nobody left to work, period. So, you know, I know you guys think about the county, but that's thinking about the county, too, is figuring out a way to make everybody happy, as long as we, you know, because you got, have an ambulance service somehow, and public works, and you can't outsource everything, so.
Thank you, Mike.
Would you like for me to explain what this is?
I can, I can, I can figure it out if you guys can.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay.
Can I allow to do any more questions?
Anybody else have, go ahead.
What are the chances of us being able to go back to the original plan that we had when I first started, which was on state? It seemed like it was the easiest thing, nobody had any complaints. Why'd we go away from it?
We have to stick with the current plan for three years.
May I ask why we went away from it in the first place?
Good question.
For our commission.
Somebody before us thought that was a good deal, and it turned out not to be a good deal.
So we can go back to it in 2028? Would you guys consider that?
I definitely would.
Yeah, I would.
Would it be better?
I don't know.
We won't know until we get there, but that's definitely on the table when it comes back. I called the state earlier this year, you know, saying, hey, we didn't make that decision, you know, and basically begging, and they're like, that's just how it works, the, the way the cycles work. We can't, we can't get back into it for three years, so that's...
And I, I understand everybody's job's hard. I get that 100%. What I'm afraid of is, and this is not on me saying this, what I'm afraid of from hearing, is I'm afraid of everybody being, like, leaving and going someplace else.
I'm worried about that, too.
Because you can't, you can't run a jail without the jail staff, no ENS, no deputies. I mean, our benefits are getting taken from us, insurance, like, I just feel like we're getting the shaft here.
Yeah.
Respectfully.
Yeah. Well, and I apologize, I mean, because we definitely should have been talking about this back in July, probably, or June, May, you know. And I know we met with, with the insurance people and stuff like that, but with, you know, we just...
Time after time again, we were told that we were waiting on the claims rates.
We were. I remember that, back in September, we were told, or August, we were told we were waiting on claims rates. And we thought, because at the time, it was 97, and when it came out to 117, that was a kicking in the chin, you know?
So if it does come down to it, to where this doesn't work, and you do have a lot of people threatening, would you guys be willing to do raises to where people can't afford to continue to work for this county?
I'm trying to find as many avenues as I can to, to, to create more money, so we can get raises, because I believe that you guys are underpaid, so...
You guys just got the housing fund from the jail for us getting wind on Douglas, so you got that in the general.
That can't be spent on what you want us to spend it on.
It could have been, but we didn't choose to do so.
You can't go to races?
Not right now. But, to answer the question, we will do everything we can to make sure that this is right, okay? I don't know what that is right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we end up going with one of these plans that are less than what we currently pay, would you guys be open to do an employee, an employer contribution towards the HSA? That would benefit a lot of employees, I believe.
The problem with an HSA plan is you usually have a high deductible. And a lot of us are not healthy enough to have a high deductible.
Just give us that money.
And, and, and I'm more than happy to put additional plans on there, but I do think that would be a, a benefit for those that, those that it would, I think that it'd be nice to offer.
What about...
That's why you offer multiple plans, because people are all different, people need different things.
Yeah, and so there, there may be a lot of people that find that attractive.
What would, could we include a, an option on there that if they choose, they don't want to do the county insurance, and then we just give them, I mean, like, the 902?
You can't do that.
Huh?
You can't do that. That, that violates Affordable Care Act.
That pesky ACA. I'd really like to know how much bottom line dollar on the old plan.
I, I just sent him an email.
Yeah. Well, and, and on this chart here, if the, if the old plan has been increased by 17% and it goes up to 1.5, then we're, we're short by about $130,000, $132,000.
Which is a mil.
Huh?
Which is a mil.
Yeah.
Which is exactly what was spoke about in the budget meeting before it was set.
Well, you know, we could have, should have, would have. Hindsight is wonderful, but it is what it is. I mean, I'm willing to course correct it, that's what we need to do.
I understand contributing to the HSA plan, but in the end, I mean, that money sits there, you can use it on prescriptions, you can use it on, you know, towards your doctor's appointments, but it doesn't compensate for what we're going to be paying in premiums. It doesn't balance. The math doesn't matter. So, I mean...
Not for everybody. For some, it would.
Right. It depends, I, I hear what you're saying, I hear what she's saying, because it depends on, you know, if you got a single guy who's healthy, who's 24, 25 years old, there's not, it doesn't work for that individual. Makes sense? But, it works for that individual, but it doesn't work for somebody like me, who's, I'm busted up, so that wouldn't work for me. So it depends on the person.
Well, and if you look at how much they're saying our claims were, I mean, it's not going to benefit a whole lot of people here, because apparently, we're not a healthy, healthy group of people.
Kansas in general is not healthy, and Bourbon County is, overall falls into that with the Department of Health. We are, we are one of the unhealthiest counties in the state, so...
I don't know what you guys are talking about, I'm a poster boy for fitness.
Dawn may look good for a first year, how about looking into another, another company that offered it, and, and for three years until you get back to the state? I mean, that's why they went with Dawn, is because his plan looked good for the first year, well, now it's going up. The next person, you go, it's going to do the same thing. Why not, why not do that for three years until you get back to the state?
I seem to remember something that says we're locked in with Dawn.
No.
No?
We're not.
Okay.
So we're running out of, yeah, we're...
You're getting late in the year, now you're opening enrollment.
We're running out of time to, to try to search out another one.
Right.
A newer one. I, I, it's a good ideal.
Yeah, but if we do that, we won't have insurance this time next year, as slow as this has been going, because they'll come up with some reason to, you know, don't have the correct I's dotted and the T's crossed, you know, so...
Yep.
I mean, I feel like we got, I feel like we got, all of us got screwed when we went from the state, but, you know, that's not yours, you know, and I feel like we'd be getting, getting very...
I'm just uncertain as to why he didn't present what we're already on, with what he's presented. Why didn't he present, okay, this is what you're on now, this is what it would cost?
He did that in a meeting, in a meeting that not everybody could attend at his office. And then I sent the transcription of that meeting to everybody here.
But we don't have it.
Who made the decision not to offer that, though?
Nobody made the decision not to offer it.
But, but we don't have it to look at now, is what I'm saying. Why, why wasn't it presented to us as employees?
I just asked, I, I just asked for him to send those numbers to us. These are the new numbers he sent that we talked about in the Monday meeting.
Right. But I'm asking why, I, I'm, I'm not saying anything against you, I'm asking why he wouldn't go ahead and just present, okay, this is what you're on now, if you stay here, this is, you know, this is what it would cost.
No one asked him to come here and present today, and he had other obligations when we sent this meeting.
Well, Susan said he's available for phone call.
I think a very small, does somebody want to call him?
He said he was driving, so he'd be available until 6:00, but it's about 6:00.
I sent him an email asking.
Will he be driving?
I sent it to Jeremy and everybody. He has a team.
I say, call him.
Yeah.
Shop around.
Yeah, call him.
That would be great.
Yeah, you understand, he's trying to make money.
As, as in any, any...
They ain't knocking them for trying to make money, but you got to negotiate.
And he said that they'll go back and ask for better rates again. I don't actually know how all this works, but...
Yeah, but we're...
I mean, that, to me, that's what I, I want to hand them back and say, do better. Because this isn't...
He said he intends to do all that.
Okay.
I mean, we're kind of getting into the end of the line, because now, other companies are at open enrollment, and that's running out, so people, we don't know what ours is going to be for those that have spouses, to even check and see what theirs are going to be, because we're down to the wire now.
Well, I mean, right now, if I'm looking at what we pay now, it's, we, we pay, like, it's $1,500, and we're paying like a thousand of it, and they're, and the employees paying like 400 of it. So, it's higher than what we're paying for individuals, but, you know, I don't want to cut that now and say, well, you know, if you got a spouse or a family plan, it's going to cost you more out of pocket. I'm kind of looking here, trying to see what it's, you know, because I mean, I just retired from a company, and they're paying me a stip in, you know, so that is in lieu of, but it's an HSA, so how many, I mean, there is one of those options on that plan, that you could do an HSA, and then you, you're provided money, and then you're, you go find your...
Right. But, okay, your deductible, or your deductible right now is 63.50.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's going to take a long time for that HSA to build up.
To get to that.
To get to that 63.50. Your co-insurance is up to 66 instead of 20.
What is the, uh, overall on that one? Is that that end one? That's the last one, right?
Yes.
And the overall is 1, 1.366?
Yes, 1.93.
No, the overall premium was, yeah, it's 1.93% increase. I'm saying, is the total premium for the year?
So Dawn's driving. He said he has about five minutes that he can answer some questions. Can you hear us, Dawn?
I hear you fine, yep.
Hey, Dawn, is there any way, really, what would be most beneficial, is if you could, I sent Jeremy two emails asking him, it's a reply to his email where he sent us these new plans. If he could send me the comparison sheet from the old Plan A and B with all of those increased rates. I remembered the first one, it was $150 for employee only per month. I did not remember the increases on all of the other levels. I was wanting to know if Jeremy would please send that sheet.
I'll see him tonight at the 6 o'clock meeting we have at a business here in town, and I'm meeting him there, and I'll tell him that we want to get all those...
Okay, and, so you won't see him until six to get those numbers?
Well, I can't get him at six, because we're, we'll be in a meeting with a big business here in town, we're meeting with their CFO at six, so he'd have to be, he'd have to do it, you know, after seven or seven-thirty, assuming he's got him with him and not have to go back to the office, because it's an industrial park.
I just not got those in email, so.
Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Pardon?
Yes, I just not ha, I've not had those in email. So if you would email those, that'd be wonderful. It's just that single sheet there.
Just the single sheet with the before and after?
Yes.
Okay, I'll tell him that. Did you already ask him for that? So it'd be in his emails.
I did, yes, but he's not replied, yep.
Yeah, he has seven meetings back to back to back, and now he's got his eighth one here at six o'clock, so I don't think he's done anything with meet people today, but I'll tell him, and he's pretty good working late at night if he has to.
Okay.
Do we have any vision or dental numbers, like, where are those in comparison to last year?
We haven't seen any increases, but I'll tell him to send you that also on the vision and dental. We haven't seen, I haven't seen any increases on that, it should all be the same, but I'll, I'll double check with him. That'll be real easy to check, we usually, I mean, if someone did surprise us, we can usually get those numbers back within a day from many, many carriers and get them to match it, so I think, I think those will be fine, but I'll double check with him, make sure we're not having any surprises there. I know we've been focusing on the medical, trying to meet the budget and that, so he's probably got them and just didn't send them yet. A lot of people wait till they've got the medical ironed out, and then they want that kind of the next day. We can do it however you want, I'll tell him we want it right away. It should be pretty close to same, or we can pretty well get it there. The dental and vision, usually, they try to keep those even, steady for a while. You might even have had a two or three year rate guarantee, I can't remember.
Do you know off the top of your head, Don, what the increases were for the employee plus spouse, employee plus children, the family, what the percentages was on the A and B original?
Well, it seems to me, if you left all the plans exactly alone, the increases were right around seventeen percent. The first set of renewals came with options to make it eight or nine or eleven or something like that, and then Christie sent the other ones, which got a lower. Then I think we had a bunch of alternate quotes from other companies that we haven't really went into yet. You should have got those that night, they were in the spreadsheets, Jeremy thought he gave them to you, but I don't know if you've seen those or not. But with Blue Cross, I think, with the Blue Cross, what we usually do is get all the Blue Cross quotes, and then we try to see what you're ironing out, then we go back to Blue Cross and say, look, we got some other competitive proposals that might be a little better, and can you sharpen your pencil? We try to get them to come down. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. Or if you're really serious about the other plans, we can answer those questions pretty fast on those. Most people in Fort Scott like to stay with Blue Cross, even if it's a little higher. They just have that comfort feeling, you know, but, but a lot of people, you know, say, hey, that's a lot of money, and insurance is still covering us, so. But, you know, Blue Cross, we can, I think it was seventeen percent, though, but I'll have to look and see.
On every single plan?
I don't have it right in front of me.
So if we added seventeen percent each, every single one of these, it'd probably, we'd get close?
I think they were fourteen to seventeen on all the plans, yeah, that's what I think they were. I'll have to look, but it's what I remember.
That figures up right for that sing, for the single, so.
Okay, yeah.
That's on the old plan, it's what we have now.
Yeah, you leave everything alone.
Because it, because I do remember that being a hundred and fifty dollars increase per month, is that right, Don? That's the only number that.
I remember just going over the numbers with Christie and Jeremy and you, and then, you know, we calculated it out, but that sounds right. I mean, that's, to me, that's, I'm ninety percent sure you're right, I just, you know, without looking and being in my car, it's, you know, I'm pretty sure you're not far off, you know, for one thing.
Thank you, Don.
So we'll ask him for the dental vision, we'll ask him for all the comparisons of the before and after rates on all the Blue Cross plans, and if you have questions about any of the other quotes, or you haven't seen them for some reason, you want to talk about those, let us know. We'll be out at the industrial park from six to about seven fifteen in a meeting, but then we'll be heading back, so we'll be available for that, or tomorrow.
Don, have you guys looked at, this is Susan, have you looked at the, we know what the increase in total cost is. Have you looked at spreading that differently across the different plans, where we might have only one in a plan and maybe contributing differently, because we can change the rates based on that?
Well, we looked at was more of a defined contribution, where you pick a fixed dollar amount, and you apply it to all the plans, and that's what most groups do, they simplify it by just saying, a lot of groups have tried in the past, some successfully, where they try to help a family out, or help an employee spouse, or drive people to a certain plan. Certainly, Blue Cross just wants the premium every month of the total, but most groups, I would say four out of five, say, here's your fixed dollar, we contribute, apply it to whichever plan or whichever one affects you, and that's what most groups do. And then we, if it looks like it's too much for them, we try to help them with subsidies in the ACA plans and things like that, you know, because insurance is so much money, it's, it's, it takes a lot of work, and you want to do it right, and you don't want to get stuck with the wrong network or the premiums you can't afford, so it's a big deal, but, but, yeah, most groups do it with a default, but we didn't really experiment with it, because that's just a lot of hypothetical, where you just plug in, if this plan, you do this, and you can, you can tell us how you want to do it, and we'll do it that way. Or if you have specific things you want, send it in an email, we'll try to get them worked up for you.
Okay, we'll let you know, Don, thank you.
Anything else?
We're going to have to start a special meeting here in a few minutes, so.
Okay, okay.
We're going to have to reset this.
Well, I'll be looking on my phone, answer some questions after seven fifteen, when we're leaving the industrial park, we'll try to respond, or tomorrow, we'll try to respond, and I'll, I'll talk to Jeremy in a few minutes.
Thank you.